Good evening, everyone. Today is May 22, 2020. And this is a special meeting of the Salisbury City Council. And so we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. At this time, I would like to take a moment for silent meditation. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
We'll move.
Second.
Got a motion by April and a second by, did I hear Jack?
Yes.
Entertain a a mo- a motion to adopt ordinance number 2599. The first reading to amend Chapter 15.26, Rental of Residential Premises of the Salisbury City Code by adding subsection 15.26.035. Rent increases barred during states of emergency and authorizing the mayor to issue such executive orders as are necessary to protect tenants from abuse. Have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
That Angela?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, Mr. Voda. I'm sorry.
Yes?
We need to vote to adopt the legislative agenda.
Oh.
We had a, we had a motion and a second.
My apologies.
Yeah.
Back up and I'll call for the question on adopting the legislative agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Blake?
Yeah.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes, cut.
Mr. Heath?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I guess we'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 2599 again.
We'll move.
And a second by Angela. Is that correct, Angela?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tillman, we're back on track.
All right. Good evening. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend Chapter 15.26 Rental of Premises of the Salisbury City Code by adding subsection 15.26.035. Rent increases barred during states of emergency and authorizing the mayor to issue such executive orders as are necessary to protect tenants from abuse. Whereas the mayor and council, the city of Salisbury desired to update the Salisbury Municipal Code. And whereas a state of emergency was declared by the governor on March 5, 2020 due to the pandemic known as COVID-19. And whereas Governor Hogan has issued multiple executive orders in attempt to reduce the spread of COVID-19 resulting in shutdown or slowdown of multiple businesses in the state of Maryland. Whereas one effect of the COVID-19 pandemic is record-high unemployment rates. And whereas it has come to the attention of the city that some landlords have terminated leases, advised tenants to vacate rental premises, and engaged in campaigns to mislead tenants into leaving their homes or agreeing to the payment of higher rental fees. And whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city to prevent the dissemination of misleading information, to amend the code to freeze increases in rent and rental fees during the state of emergency to maintain the status quo now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury. The Chapter 15.26 of the Salisbury Municipal Code be amended by adding the following subsection, Chapter 15.26. And that subsection is Chapter 15.26.035 entitled Rent Increases Barred During States of Emergency. And subsection A defines emergency in this section. Emergency means the catastrophic health emergency declared by the governor of Maryland on March 5, 2020 as amended or extended by the governor under State Public Safety Article 14-3A02 and such other emergencies as are declared by the governor or the mayor pursuant to SC 17-4 of the Salisbury City Charter in Sections 2.08.020 and 9.08.220 of the Salisbury Municipal Code. This section only applies to rental fee increases on existing tenants during an emergency. Nothing in this section shall be construed as applying to leases for new tenants. Further, nothing in this section with respect to an increase in the tenant's portion of a rental fee applies to any public housing authority who must comply with federal laws, regulations, or other federal requirements to determine a tenant's rental fee. In general, under C, a landlord may not increase a tenant's rental fee if the increase would take effect during an emergency or two, if notice of the increase is not in compliance with subsection D of this section. The subsection D entitled Notice of Rent Adjustment During an Emergency and Within 90 Days After the Expiration of an Emergency, a landlord may not increase or notify a tenant of an increase in a rent or rental fee. Rental fees shall include any fee for service, a product, or commodity provided by the landlord or by a third party to a tenant prior to the declaration of the emergency. Pre-emergency rent increase notices, a landlord must inform a tenant in writing to disregard any notice of a rental fee increase if the landlord provided the notice to the tenant prior to an emergency and the effective date of the increase would occur on or after the date of the emergency began. Late fees prohibited under subsection E. Late fee is defined in this section means any additional charge or fee imposed because a rental fee is not made within the rent when the rental fee is due under the terms of the lease. Late fee includes a fee imposed as a flat rate or as a percentage of the rental fee due or any other terms. Paragraph 2, in general, landlord may not charge, assess, or otherwise seek to collect a late fee from a tenant for non-payment or the late payment of a rental fee that comes due during an emergency. And sub-paragraph F entitled Payment Plans. Landlord shall offer payment plans to tenants for the payment of rent and rental fees to be in effect for no less than one year after the expiration of the emergency. Upon the request of a tenant, landlord shall work with tenants on an individual basis to arrange payment plans for the payment of rent and rental fees in installments which will continue for no less than one year after the expiration of the emergency. All payment plans shall be in writing and signed by the landlord and tenant. Notice two, in protection of tenants. The Housing and Community Development Department must post on its website information regarding the requirements of this section, including the date that an emergency expires and the date that is 90 days after the expiration of the emergency. In paragraph 2, during an emergency, the mayor is hereby authorized to issue any and all executive orders necessary to protect tenants from being victimized or misled by the actions of unscrupulous landlords. Violation of such executive orders will constitute a violation under this chapter and be subject to arrest and misdemeanor charge under 9.08.220 of the Municipal Code of Salisbury. H, landlord's right of review, the provisions of this subsection do not limit a landlord's right under the applicable provisions of the Salisbury Municipal Code to an administrative review of a violation notice. And subsection I, enforcement by tenant. In addition to enforcement action by city officials, tenants may seek relief from an appropriate court to restrain or enjoin any violation of this section 15.26.035 in accordance with state law. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Counsel, we'll go through one by one if anybody has any comments or suggestions or any questions. So I'll start with Ms. Jackson.
I have no questions. I totally agree with this.
Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Okay. Ms. Gregory?
No questions. Only comment is, I think this is a good thing.
Mr. Heath?
My comment would be, it's a shame that we have to do this in order to protect the people who are at the biggest risk. That's all.
Thank you. I have a question or two maybe. So I guess my question is, Mr. Mayor, whoever wants to answer this. If, if say, a tenant does not communicate with their landlord and/or fails to agree to a payment plan, or they refuse to sign anything, what, any, any suggestions or thoughts on that?
Yeah, absolutely. You're, my pleasure, and thank you for that question. So ultimately, what that does is that puts the onus back on the tenant. You know, that, that means they are obligated to their initial contract. If they don't enter into a new agreement on a payment plan, they're obligated under their contract. And, and remember that at all times. And in fact, we're going to put this in the letter that must be distributed to all tenants. They are always obligated to the full amount of their rent. You've signed a contract. And if you're late, eventually there will be consequences. Just, we're not going to allow, and state, state law already doesn't allow, but we're going to make sure that no one is surreptitiously or, you know, because of unawareness of their, or a lack of awareness of their rights made to be homeless during a crisis. But again, to that point, if they choose not to enter into a, an agreement, a payment plan, then they are, they remain subject to all of the terms of their initial lease. And any violation of the terms of a lease are ultimately going to allow a landlord to remove you. The only question would be, when? And the answer to that would be, you gotta use a court. During, you know, and obviously the courts don't open until June 5.
Thank you.
Does that answer, does that answer that question?
Yes, yes, it does. So another, just another question would be, I know that this time of year in some circles, this is turnover time with college rentals. So does that also apply to college rentals? If they have a contract end date, but their contract ends on May 30th? And it says they're supposed to get out by May, for May 31st or whatever the last date. So in that situation, is that a similar situation?
I'll ask Mr. Tillman to correct me if I'm wrong. But again, at the end of a lease, no matter if it's a college student or, you know, a family or whatever, at the end of a lease, if the landlord chooses not to offer that lease for renewal, then yeah, eventually that person has to get out and technically by that date. But not, there is no mechanism other than a court to remove someone during this crisis or at any time. And the courts aren't available until June 5. So the thing to remember here is that once, once a person has overstayed, stayed without, with an expired lease, they're, they're again in violation of that lease. And someone can't, that being said, someone cannot remove them under existing law. And this would simply allow for them to be notified of their right to be, to remain unless a court removes them. But it does not free them of any obligation, does not free them of the obligations under that contract. So, but in the case of a tenant, let's say a college student who is, is not here or is done with their lease, it wouldn't prevent the landlord from re, you know, re-advertising and re-letting that space in any way.
Thank you.
I would. Got wrong there or anything to that? No, I think, I think you hit it right on the head.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tillman. The only other edit or question I might suggest, and you know, if not tonight, then maybe between now and next week, is online 99 where we have the last part of the sentence by the actions of unscrupulous landlords. I'm hoping maybe between now and then we can find some more inclusive terminology instead of using that term. That's just one suggestion. If anybody has a word or a phrase, feel free to throw that out. And then I would say, it's unfortunate that we have to, that we have to do this, as Jack said, that we're in this situation. And but my, my thing to people, and I have a stepfather's a landlord and he's got, you know, a variety of tenants. You got your grade A tenants that pay before the rents due every month. You got your people that occasionally are late. And you got the people that you can never get a hold of. And I understand that, that, you know, some of them have those, that wide variety in between. And my message to anybody is, you know, you know, some people do consider housing a right. But if it is considered a right, with rights come responsibilities. And, you know, one of the first pieces of advice I was given growing up by my parents and my grandparents was the first bill you pay is your rent or your mortgage. And alongside that, your electricity and your water bill, if you have a water bill. You know, those are the key components to having a safe housing, a healthy living environment. And if you are struggling and are in a time that you've lost your income, I know a lot of people have not received their unemployment. Some, some people are getting it, some people are not. It's a system that's, that's struggling because it's overloaded. Communicate with those people. You know, the city, we have plans, we're not shutting people's water off. And you can develop a plan to catch up on your water bill. Electricity, the same thing, communicate with the company, but they cannot shut you off right now. Same thing with your landlord or your mortgage company. Communicate. Make a plan. As long as you are communicating, they are, they most likely will work with you. If you're in a situation that they won't, this is an avenue and why we put these protections in here. And, and we're gonna have information for those people to make contact and report these situations. So, um, with that, I will, unless there's any other comments or suggestions, anybody have any? All right, with that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It took a second for me to get the unmute button done. So as far as the language in the bill, as far as the wording, unscrupulous, there are a lot of synonyms. So we could go with dishonest, we could go with immoral. We could go with many, many, many descriptors. Bad faith. But I, I think unscrupulous, if it doesn't apply to you, it doesn't apply to you. And we're not, we're not, we're targeting the ones that are unscrupulous. And I think some of these landlords who have shown, taken, clutched their pearls and taken offense to the actual language in the bill, I think they need to take a step back, realize it's not personal. There are unscrupulous members in their numbers. And it's unfortunate, it happens in every profession. It happened in my profession of childcare. It's happened in any kind of profession. So, you know, I would not take offense if someone had called bad faith providers unscrupulous, because they absolutely are. So myself, I, I don't see where the language is a problem. But there are lots of words we can use to substitute if they, if that's, if that's the one bugaboo that people have about it.
Thank you, Michelle.
And Mayor, I want to say something, just one thing. I do want to encourage renters to, if you have the money, to pay your rent. Or communicate with your landlord. I will say this a million times. If you have the money, hey, don't hold back because these are crucial times. And just because you have things that are in place for you right now, don't take advantage of that. Do what you need to do. I'm like Mayor, first thing I was taught was to pay my rent, pay my mortgage, pay my bills before I do anything else. And I'm just asking that the citizens of Salisbury, that are renters, in good faith, do what's right as well. As we are coming towards the landlords, you have to do what's right as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. At this time, I will call for the question on the first reading of ordinance number 2599. Ms. Jackson?
I'm for it.
Ms. Blake? Come back to her. Ms. Gregory?
I'm for it.
Mr. Heath?
Aye.
Ms. Blake, are you back on?
I did unmute her.
I'm for it. This is Ms. Blake. I'm for it.
Okay, thank you. And the chair votes aye. So that, so the ordinance passes five to zero. At this time, Ms. Glens, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor. Nicole Bishop has asked to speak. And if there are others that would like to speak, put your name in the chat box and we'll call on you in that order.
So anyone that wishes to make a comment, please limit your comments to less than four minutes. And if somebody makes a great comment and you agree with them, you can just say ditto. Or if you have something to add, that's fine. Thank you. Ms. Bishopper?
Okay. Hi there.
Hi.
Thanks so much for giving me guys a moment of your time to address the council and the community. Some of you guys know me, Nicole Bishopper. My husband and I own a home here in Newtown Historic District. We're just pretty regular people that care about our community. That said, I've been following the city of Salisbury's effort to reopen. And with that, the rental aid that's offered to our community has created quite the stir. And I found myself wanting to better understand how this affected our community broadly and not just my neighbors, but like also my neighbor's landlord. And I realized that sometimes in our fear, we forget that we're all really just people trying to work on this together. So today I did something that I don't usually do. And I took a really deep breath. And instead of being reactionary, I listened. And I asked a lot of questions. And I might have lost my temper a little bit. But we're all human. And I think that's something that we need to stop and think about for one single minute. We're all human. And our world is really uncomfortable right now. And we all know how difficult it is to talk about words like debt and unemployment and eviction. And we're faced with those words daily. And fear can present itself in really funny ways, like frustration and anger. But if we're going to come together and be this community of kindness that we're pretending to be, we really have to find a way to hold those uncomfortable feelings together. And we need to embrace them and use that power to come together and fix things the way they need to be. So I didn't understand what was going on with the rental issue at all. I don't know anything about rental laws. So I started reaching out to anyone I could think of. And it landed me in one of the most powerful conversations I've ever had with a woman whose business is keeping people in homes. I learned a lot from Chris Adams today in our heart-to-heart. It's so easy to vilify the people we have to give money to. And it is so much harder to understand their perspective and their humanity. Ms. Adams told me today that I was the very first person who had ever reached out to her to ask her how she felt about things, to respect them and to try and understand the problem from just a human standpoint. Nothing else, just human. So additionally, I also listened to the accounts of renters that are being thrown out or being threatened to be thrown out. And I've known that fear. I've had someone call me and tell me I had to get out the next day. And I didn't know that that was something you couldn't do. I knew that was something that was impossible, but I didn't know at the time. And we need to understand that there's no fear in not knowing. And we need to keep that and make people understand there's no fear in not knowing. There is a fear in not knowing the rules and regulations that are out there and that are in place already. And that scares people and you become reactionary. And I didn't know a lot of these laws, like real estate owners needing to live in the area or needing a property management place to take care of things locally. I learned so much. And I realized that we are all in this for the same problem. We need to keep people in houses to be safe because we're in the middle of a pandemic with a very contagious disease that affects all of us. And this is craziness. So we just need to take a step back and disregard everything else to do with policies and laws and regulations for one second and just think about humans and what humans need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Glens?
Andrea Shaw would like to speak next. And again, if you would like to speak, please put your name in the chat box.
Andrew?
Thank you guys so much for the opportunity to talk. I'm coming to you from somewhat of a strange position possibly because I do work for a local landlord. And so my business is rentals. That being said, both me and my company support so much of what is in this bill and have been trying to do the same thing. Much like what you're saying here, it does not benefit us to kick people out. That's not the end goal. Anybody that has been communicative, anybody that has proven a hardship due to COVID-19, we are working with all of them to the extent of $100 payment plan on a $4,000 balance. That works. Our goal is to keep everybody in their homes. My question comes to, my understanding of what Governor Hogan has issued is that a lot of this is eligible to those who can prove that hardship, those who have provided the documentation to show that they have been substantially impacted by COVID-19. I haven't seen that wording here. Is that the case in this particular ordinance? Or is this an across-the-board zero increases, zero changes for everybody?
We will take, we were not, we don't respond in public comments, but we take the questions and then we will respond. If you want to send Julia your email in a private chat, we'll make sure a response gets to you.
That would be great. That would be great. I, I think it's really important to know that, you know, myself and most of the landlords that I have spoken with, we're not attempting to remove anybody from their home. You know, communication is key, as you all have said. And this has been really helpful and really thankful to have been able to be a part of it. So thank you for the time and I will definitely, Julia, shoot you a message with my email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia, who's next?
John Cannon is next.
County Council Vice President, John Cannon. You are up, sir. Can you hear me now, John?
Looks like he's unmuted now. He's having some.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, John. I'm getting a lot of static.
How about now? Yes or no?
That's better. Yes.
Okay, I'll pass.
You pass? Okay. Julia, anybody else?
I'll pass. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I'll, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you, John. Julia?
I don't see any other comments in the thread, but there may be folks on phones that or on, on the phone that can't, so if there's anybody else, they can unmute themselves.
Austin Whitehead just posted a comment.
John, you're, you're screening, you're, you're sharing your screen right now.
John, this is starting to feel like a county council meeting.
Okay.
Austin, Austin, I think you said you wanted to comment, Austin Whitehead.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
I got you. Go ahead, Austin.
All right, great. Thank you guys for, you know, taking the time to listen to me. I'm here, you know, talking on behalf of, not only myself, Coastal Association of Realtors, as well as I have a rental management company. Most of the rentals that we, most of the properties that we manage are for individual owners, owners with few rental properties. So I'm not coming from a stance of ownership of one person owning multiple units. You know, just certain things, I like that Jake Day talked about, hey, you know, you had a contract and, and these are things if you, and they, the landlord tries to work with you to make things happen, and they're not going forward with that, that, you know, action can be taken against them still. And I think it would be a good idea on both ends to make that known, because coming out, although I, I know where they're coming from, I feel that a lot of things can be taken advantage of, and during times when court systems aren't open, you know, you have landlords that I represent, or owners that I represent with, say, only one unit, that they rely on that income to be able to make payments, to pay taxes, to everything that comes along, maintain the property. So, so being careful with our wording i- is important, I feel. And making sure that people, you know, don't take advantage of it. It, it's come up to me, you know, timelines for increases, I know they had the ninety days in there. It's come up to me that, you know, if, if it could be brought down to thirty days after the expiration of a emergency, and and just the, the payment plan, if, you know, again, Jake had talked on, on some things, but when, if they don't follow through with their payment plan, just making sure it's recognized that, hey, this isn't just, you, tenants can pick and choose when they pay and, and don't take advantage of it. Because I, I, like again, I said, I represent people that just have very minimal, and they really need that money to come in to support them, and it's hard on, on both sides through this whole thing. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Austin. Any more comments, Julia?
It looks like Chris is raising her hand, Chris Adams.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Chris Adams?
I'm just listening to this, and I'm wondering how is, it's quite an in-depth piece of legislation you guys have there. What, who's enforcing this and who's gonna adjudicate every situation? And how is this gonna get, who's in charge of this? Do, do, does this come directly to the mayor for him to handle, or does it go to? Who's gonna handle when you have these conflicts going on? And decide who's right and who's wrong? That's all. You can.
Well, if you want to drop your email to Julia, we'll, we'll make sure we get a response to you via email. And then we'll post all the responses. Thank you, Chris. I think she muted herself. Okay. If there's no more comments, before we go, I'd just like to remind everybody, please, please support our local businesses, our local restaurants. And we are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.